All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Council, do you see any way of form present in person and virtual?
Yes, we do.
Dr. Proctor is joining us virtually. Councilmember Snaggy, councilmember Lomia present. Councilmember Fasson will return in just a moment. And councilmember Hannah is absent for this evening's meeting. Council, you have an agenda before you that has been distributed previously. Give the full motion.
Take a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Second.
Motion to adjourn in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, council. All right, next item on the agenda. Presentation, first up, Kim Goldner.
Assistant Senator. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am filling in for Mary Elizabeth Burgess, our Planning and Development Director, regarding three annexation and rezoning items that have gone before the Planning Commission this past Tuesday evening and will be coming before council Monday evening through the public hearing and new business requests for approval processes. I'm going to be abbreviated this evening and not go through the full presentation that Mary Elizabeth normally does. All of the information is in the staff reports you have in your package, and I'll just briefly describe kind of what it is we're trying to accomplish with all three of these. This is unique in that the City of Jasper is the applicant in all three cases. The first one is an annexation request, and that is for parcel 0538092, which is the parcel located at 490 Liberty Lane. That is the parcel that the Liberty Tank is on. We have some storage on, and there is a cabin located on there as well. Parcel size is .89 acres. This is currently in the county. It is zoned as highway business, and staff will be recommending approval of the request to annex and rezone to M1. The rezoning requests that we will be bringing before you on Monday are for two linked parcels. It's JA03043 and JA03041, which are located at 852 Pioneer Road. That is our Water Utilities Line Maintenance Building or the shop. There is a building on the front parcel, which is much smaller. It's .98 acres. And then there's a four-acre parcel directly behind it that is connected to that, and that is where the construction yard is. They store equipment there. They store materials, you know, if they need rock, dirt, all of those things, they keep pipe back there as well. That parcel, both of them are actually zoned R1, residential low density, which is not what those parcels actually need to be. And so staff will be recommending approval of the request to rezone both parcels as That's what I have. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, come call a license request, Lindsey Wiggins, Finance Director.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm just bringing before you a request that was made. We've had an applicant apply for a package, or beer wine and liquor license, which would be for a package store. And this is kind of a unique situation because it's a vacant lot. There's not a building on this lot that is located on Noah Drive. So the applicants just want to make sure that this can be approved or will go through before they, you know, go any further down the process of permitting and things like that. Mary Elizabeth Burgess and myself have been working with the applicants. They have submitted all their paperwork, which is in your packet. They've met their background check, and there's no disqualifying factors. There will be some additional contingencies added on with the license, since there is a, there's just not a building there yet. So I'll be bringing those before you on Monday. If there's anything additional that y'all would like, feel just to note and we'll get those for the approval on, or the presentation on Monday.
Council, any info you may need on this one item? Is that a go on? And is there any objection for this being a consented item?
No, I have no problem with it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Next item, software agreement, John Scher, Fire Chief. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have two different software agreements. First one is Rysyrk. It's called the Compliance Engine, Rysyrk Repairing Company. This software would be at no cost to the City of Jasper. It is a software platform that is utilized by Fire Marshal's Office and aids in compliance of suppression and detection systems. Basically, what happens, let's say, we have an annual inspection on a location, maybe last month, and today something happens in the suppression system. Unless they decide to notify us about it, Fire Department won't know for response purposes until that annual inspection comes over the next year. What this software does is they work with the companies, the licensed state inspectors and, well, not state inspectors, but state licensed suppression companies and detection companies that service all this equipment. They work with them, and they report back to us. So there's no cost to us, but it is an agreement therefore, and we'll break before council for approval. Do you have any questions about that particular?
Has that been through the attorney?
It has been through Mr. Siphon. He did make some recommendations, which we had addressed, and then we brought it back to the committee after those recommendations were met, and now we're going to vote for you.
I think this is statewide.
This is not statewide. This is something that a lot of other municipalities and counties use, but it is not statewide. It is a private company that does it. There is a small meeting that they charge.
I was at a retirement celebration this afternoon and met up with someone who I had worked with on fire suppression notifications, and he mentioned this today.
Okay. It's definitely a good tool and something positive. Fire Marshal's Office allows them to perform more efficiently and make sure our buildings are always kept up to code and very safe for our residents.
Simple agreement, been through legal, no cost to the city. Anything else you may need, council? Any objection for consent?
No.
Thank you, council. Next item for you, sir.
All right, the next one is the Lexi Poll. It is Rescue One Academy. This is something that's going to be utilized by the training officer, and it allows us to track and compile training as well as deliver training to help ensure all our personnel maintain their state licensures. It's both on fire and EMS. You know, we have to have hours for both to maintain our licenses for our employees. The cost to us on this one is $2,940. That is budgeted through our training budget. Reason we're bringing it for you again is because it is an agreement. And this particular software is something that is offered through Lexi Poll as well.
Thanks, sir. Currently budgeted item, as the chief mentioned, $2940 per year, extremely low cost, has been through the legal review process. Council, do you have any other information or questions for the chief on that item? And any objection for that going on consent?
No.
Thank you, council. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next item, downtown bathroom location, Andrew Collins, Utility Director. Welcome, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Forgive me if I stumbled through this. This is the first workshop I've been to since I got on board, so. This item is for the long-winded public restrooms going downtown. They are tenuously scheduled for June 20th delivery. For that, we have to have the bathrooms prepped, the pad for the bathrooms. That entails sewer lines, water lines, power put-in. We also will have to grade and build on to the current pad where the banking is to set. And you can see the quote for this work. We reached out to four companies. We only got a response from two that could meet the deadline. We had North George Grading who couldn't meet it, so they've denied a quote. ANC Grading, they've denied a quote. I'm sorry. Appalachian Design couldn't meet the deadline. So it was down to T-Stan Code and ANC Grading. And you can see the cost on those two quotes. The recommendation for this is to approve the quote for T-Stan Code for $33,485. That will entail building pad prep, parking lot, removal of existing stairs, broken concrete around the building. All of that is part of this quote here. And in doing this, bringing in the new bathrooms, it's going to be a big eyesight for the city. We're also going to upgrade our non-ADA compliant sidewalks that are in front of those bathrooms. That is part of this project as well.
Thank you, sir. Council, you have the information before you. Do you have any other information needed for this on Monday's agenda? And on this, is this a consented item or is there an objection for going on consent?
Is this $38,000 on the budget or what?
So this would be 2020 SLOST is what we propose to cover this with?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see what's discussed, because everybody's in the interest in the bathrooms.
All right, can we place on regular agenda?
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You did good.
Next item on the agenda, you have a City Manager Office update. And if I may interject for just a moment, City Manager, remind the public that this Saturday, we have a ribbon cutting grand opening at Doris Wigginton Park at 11:00 a.m. located off of Lumber Company Road. So there will be giveaways, there will be food, lots of fun. So come and join us for the ribbon cutting. And with that, I will turn it over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and public. Andrew, this is my first work session as well, getting back, so I'll try to muddle through it. The first thing, just kind of, I think it's appropriate for me to address is you'll notice that the agenda for this evening's work session was slightly modified in its visual appearance. That's merely to differentiate between the work session and the regular meeting. I do not anticipate, you know, doing any modifications to the Monday meeting format. The Mayor and I had discussed along with Kim and Lori that just in terms of, I think, the expectations relative to the work session, working meeting of the items plus some things that may come up, literally up until the last moment, that may be or may not be ripe for decision. You'll see that what I'd like to do on any work session is just have the City Manager Office update to allow the Mayor, him and I, or whomever, to address things that may not be formalized in the agenda, but may still be appropriate for Monday's regular meeting. Just to kind of start it off in terms of agenda items that are perhaps ripe, that haven't necessarily been discussed, I do want to call on Kim, if she's prepared. There's a couple of items, roadway pavement and TAP, that if she wants to just kind of address with y'all and prepare.
Sure. So I'm very excited about both of these items. The first one is going to be what we hope to have approval on roadway pavement condition survey through Infrastructure Management Services. This is a company that I had met with last year to talk about. We affectionately call it the Scan Van. What they do is they take their specialized vehicle that scans the condition of your asphalt, curb and gutter, sidewalks, whatever items you would like to have scanned, and it does depth of asphalt, it assesses the condition and the severity of any kind of cuts or defaults or any kind of ruts that may be in your asphalt. And then it also builds basically the amount of footage of roadway that you have. We've had some changes over the years. We've taken on some additional roadway. And why roadway is important to us is because this is how GDOT bases our L-MIG allotment every year. And so we want to make sure that we get that mileage count correct and that we are providing them an updated number. But as we go through the exercise of developing capital improvement projects and wanting to be able to tackle sidewalk projects and tackle asphalt projects and knowing when roads actually need to be resurfaced or need to be addressed, this will help us to prepare a condition of all of our roadways and be able to prioritize the ones that actually need to be prioritized first. This is going to be through a purchasing cooperative agreement called Texas Share. We joined that. The contract is vetted. I did send the contract to Mr. Siphon for review as well, and he has some suggestions. I will be reaching out to them tomorrow to kind of work through those things. It's nothing terrible. I will tell you, the quote that is included in here for $27,280 is based on an assumed number of miles that we have within the city limits. And for right now, we're using 50 miles. If they actually count less miles, that number is going to go down. If it goes up, the number may go up then. But I find that to be an investment in what we are getting every year on L-MIG, and so it will be money that is well spent because we're getting the correct allotment for the roads that we are expected to maintain.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Now that's exciting.
Okay, so in February of this year, we submitted an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives Program, or the TAP program. You'll recall that last year, we were awarded $500,000 for preliminary engineering and design of several segments of sidewalk. We are currently underway with that project right now with GDOT. They are doing all of the assessment work, the environmental review, and the design for the city because we are not lapse certified. When I submitted this project, a little different this year, this one was not limited to preliminary engineering and design. So I went ahead and applied for engineering, utility work that would be needed, and construction of the sidewalks. And this past Friday, we were notified that we've been awarded the grant in the amount of $1.651 million. The city will be, thank you, Dr. Proctor, the city will be responsible for contributing 20%, and that is in phases, that equates to $330,000 roughly, that we will need to contribute over time. As I said, we blocked off money for engineering and design, so obviously that has to happen first. There will be a utilities component because the road that I am proposing that we sidewalk and improve the right-of-way on is North Main Street between Chambers and Revolution Church. Why I like this roadway is because it is coming straight into our town. This will improve the walkability and connectivity of our city, plus it ties into segments of sidewalk that are going to be improved through the 2023 TAP grants. So it's all networked interconnected roadways. And so I will be asking on Monday for approval to let GDOT know that we will accept this award and can provide the matching funds. There are a couple of different avenues. Right now, I think 2020 SLOST is going to be the most reasonable avenue to pull that funding from.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's exciting news.
Are you keeping a running tab on how many millions of dollars in grants?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Can you share that with us?
A little over $3.1 million.
Very good job.
Very good job.
Thank you.
Snaggy, I'm surprised you didn't have one mailed.
He did.
He did. Eat your chicken, kill my. No worries. Good job, though. I appreciate your work.
That's exciting. All right, on to the next few items, sir.
Yes, so what I do want to do is make sure that counsel those that I will not be touching any grants.
Thank you.
Just because I think my touch may not necessarily be the best touch. Nonetheless, so those two items, as Kim mentioned, we do want to put before y'all. We did want to, you know, kind of reveal some of it. Additionally, I think what I would like to do as well is make sure that you all are kind of in agreement that there's an initiative that's been discussed and/or just, you know, appropriately moved towards, and that's the Main Street program for our downtown. There is a resolution that is required to essentially put on notice that we are investing in our downtown, our Main Street. And I think that, I've been back two weeks today, and even in my prior tenure, there's always been a focus on making sure that we're continuing to invest in our downtown. And so I think it's only appropriate for us to then apply for that designation. We've got to go into more details on Monday evening if y'all would like to include that in terms of the resolution. And then what I can do is kind of walk through the steps, and so anyone in attendance can then understand kind of the phases that we've kind of walked through. But I just want to make sure that's something that you all already been demonstrating in the past anyway. This is just kind of to formalize it through a resolution and application process.
And I think that was one of the goals originally started kind of working, say.
Mr. City Manager, speaking of things that have been talked about and discussed, initiatives that are moving, if you'll call attention to, there's a code road work item in there. This has been discussed, council, for a few weeks now. Interestingly enough, it ended up in the paper for an editorial. Barriers, driveway trimming, road work, what does that look like?
Absolutely. So the team, Mr. Mayor has mentioned, for several weeks, have kind of been talking even well before my arrival, two weeks ago, about, you know, making sure that we're continuing to enhance and maintain certain sections of code road. I think the automobile accident that occurred did accelerate in terms of the opportunity to replace some of the barriers and rights-of-way along with doing some reestablishment of shoulder. And that would necessitate a closure of the road. And I think what staff had wanted to just make sure you all were aware and the public was aware, that we want to take the opportunity strategically to say, if we're going to do it anyway for the barriers, let's go ahead and solicit the services of a professional tree company to then go through and trim or remove about 25 trees just past Still Hollow, I think, to the bridge. And Andrew's here if you want more specifics, but what we did want to do is make sure you all were aware that we want to set that in motion to schedule June 4th. And I'm calling it June 4th through the 6th, although I believe they can get it done in two days. I want to make sure the expectations is just in case we need some additional staff work of rights-of-way, shoulder repair, just kind of this all-inclusive. We are estimating just a more nine to four closure, so it's not just a complete all-day, three days. It's just one of those to get in after the morning rush, get some work done, open it back up for the evening rush. And speaking with our partners at the county, I think there may be some coordinated efforts on their part to assist. With respect to public safety, we've coordinated with our team to make sure they know that part of our expectation and letting the vendors know that within feasibility is to at least allow some level of travel pass the lane even during those times of closure, if at all partial, just in case of an emergency service. That may not be feasible depending on how the setting of stuff or the tree, because we're doing an abundance caution that instead of just doing a partial windline closure and something got to go where it happened, just this time of the year after school, nine to four should be appropriate. Unless y'all have any objections operationally, the team, we're just going to coordinate that and get it going.
Looking forward to that.
I think that's a good idea.
Is that coordinated with 911?
Chief, I don't know if we've disclosed to them just yet. I know I spoke with the county chair, and I think the public safety team was going to coordinate.
We're going to make sure they're aware and coordinate real time whether we've got lane access or not to our, well, the park residences.
Thanks, sir.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, what I'd also like to bring up is you've, so in regards to some things on the agenda, some informational stuff, just some additional information in terms of, I think, what you'll find is that the items that will be on your agenda for Monday, June 3rd, there were perhaps some items continued over from your last meeting. We did not reflect that on this work session because those items are already scheduled to be on the table item, so there's no need to put it on the work session item to put any items. So just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. The auditor will be there Monday evening for a presentation, Lindsey, I believe that's correct. So just continued encouragement for you to come and the public to come to enjoy an audit presentation. That's always going to be a good way to kick off the summer.
Exciting times.
The other thing I would like to bring up is as you all, as elected body, continue to reinvest in our public safety, we did want to disclose, there was efforts made years ago about you all continuing to invest in public safety personnel by contributing to the POAB. That, we've been put on notice that the monthly dues are increasing by $10. So therefore, beginning in July 1st, we just want to make sure that you all are aware that from a budgeted standpoint, we do continue to support that effort. So unless there's any objection, that's just something that we would continue funding on behalf of our team. But kudos to you all for continuing that effort. I think it speaks volumes of your diligence in making sure we have.
That was discussed at Administration and Finance Committee and understood and recommended.
The other couple of items I just wanted to bring up that aren't necessarily ripe for a decision, but I do think it's important to segue into continuing conversations is with respect to, I'm going to own the fact that there was some confusion between our city clerk, our city attorney, our development director, that apparently I do make mistakes. And so I'm going to own the fact that sometime in January of 2020, I apparently did not float the ordinance to you all for consideration. So it's just, I don't want to say it's a procedural matter, but it will be moving through to Development Committee, probably more expeditiously than most ordinances because it's already pretty well, I think, understood that it happened, which is just something to allow third-party inspectors. Once again, it's not something that's new, but wanted to disclose it out of respect for Mr. Siphon, who was scratching his head about why I wasn't on there. So within two weeks, I've already found a mistake, Mr. Siphon, so I'm sure there's many more, so. The other item, just to kind of segue into what I'd like to do, and this is why I asked the Mayor for this general update, is there are some budgeted items, capital expenditures in the 2024 budget, specifically a couple of vehicles, one for Andrew's team, MBE's team, development truck and a security truck. I do anticipate that those are expenditures that we would obviously want to continue to move forward with to present to you all, but I asked the team if I could just have a moment to get a little acclimated, get with the budget, get with the team and say, July 1, our ambitions is to present to you all mid-year budget amendment. So your audit comes in June, mid-year budget amendment, and schedule of fees to present to you all that meeting. At that time, we can kind of translate into some additional capital purchases needed. So I don't foresee any issues with anything, so even from a SLOST initiative, I know at times there are just more questions about, you know, these particular, you know, specifics. And so we've talked today about how we want to present that to you all, just to clarify how we fund these, through these perpetual capital expenditures and SLOST funds. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I believe that was pretty well all the updates. So with that, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I believe that was pretty well all the updates I have.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. And one other thing is, I did want to illustrate too, I believe there's a good partnership that's been continued with PACA. I think there's a desire for PACA to present staff with some opportunities to partner with the art hall. So just to disclose with y'all, I think for a very nominal amount, when they present something to us, we will want to move forward on making that expenditure of support for PACA.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the input. This time, counsel, on the next item on the agenda, is an executive session for real estate and legal. Yield for a motion.
Make a motion, move to executive session, legal.
Motion in whose second?
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, same?
All right.
Thank you, counsel.